Good evening. And welcome to the Surrey County Board of Commissioners meeting tonight of June the 17th. We're so pleased you're here. We've got a lot of things to cover. We're going to get right down to business and start off. And with that calling the meeting to order, I'm going to ask Commissioner Eddie Harris to lead us to the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please, sir.
If you would please stand.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity together here tonight to do the people's business. We thank you for our wonderful county, its citizens, its volunteers, the school system, all of the people that make the Surrey County run. We thank you for your grace, your mercy, and your redemption. We thank you for our fathers that were celebrated yesterday, dear Lord. We thank you for our family units in the United States of America. And we thank you for the opportunity here to represent all of the people in Surrey County. We ask that you give us grace and guidance and safe travel home. We pray for our country. We pray for our government. We pray for our leaders, dear Lord. And most of all, dear Lord, we ask that you forgive us for our sins, and you watch and lead and guide us, and may we do the people's business pleasing unto thee. We ask these things in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Okay, gentlemen, you have read your agenda, and it's quite an agenda to read. I would like a motion to get tonight's agenda approved. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Bill Goins to approve the agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Mark Marion. Any discussion? None. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the agenda is approved. Thank you, gentlemen. Also, as part of your agenda packet tonight, we have some prior meeting minutes of June the 3rd. And if you've read them, and you like them, and you agree to them, I'm looking for a motion to approve these minutes to go into the record.
Motion to approve minutes, Mr. Chairman, from the 3rd of June 2024.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the June 3rd minutes. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Johnson. All in favor? Any discussion? None. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And the meeting minutes have been approved. Also, as an add-on from the county manager, we would like to ask if you've looked at them laying in front of you there. They're pretty short. He wants to know if we are comfortable enough with those minute meeting minutes of the last work session of June the 11th, 2024. If you have scanned them over and you like them, and you're willing to approve them, I'm looking for a motion to put these into the record, the work session of June the 11th, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion of Commissioner Mark Marion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? Being none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and we have approved the meeting minutes. Also, tonight, we have quite a lengthy consent agenda. We have several bullet points laying out the description of the headers of what these consent agendas are. But we'd always like for you folks to know what we've got in here. And for those of you that's got a meeting, a agenda here already that you picked up at tonight's meeting, then you know. But if not, we would like you to see them. But I would like to ask our county manager, Chris Knopf, if you will, to read off and explain briefly the contents of the consent agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item are the Tax Department end-of-month summaries, charges, and reports. Next is the contract renewal of the EMS MC. They do our collections for our EMS service. There's a proclamation celebrating the 75th anniversary of the Mount Airy Rotary Club. Also, renewal, this would be the third year of the litter pickup program that's funded out of the Public Works Department. This is with a third-party contractor that we selected a couple of years ago from the HR department to implement the approved pay studies for DSS, Fire Marshal, and Communications. Next is the arbitrage rebate services proposal. This is required on our limited obligation bonds from 18, 19, and 21. Next is the Hanger Apron Rehabilitation Amendment 1 for the airport. And this is basically just adding some additional grant funding that's come in from NC DOT. There's no local money as a part of that amendment. Next, for the Mount Airy High School CTE renovations Amendment 1, this is where the school system will be using lottery funds to cover some overage there, so no local money. That is going to be lottery funds only. And then last item is Budget Amendment Number 15. And there's an updated draft of each of your seats from Laura. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Gentlemen, you have read the items in the consent agenda. You have heard our manager, Chris Knopf, spell them out. Unless there's an item you want to pull out for discussion, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed here tonight and as stated by Chris Knopf. What about your motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Bill Goins. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Johnson. Any discussion? There being none. All in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving right along. We did leave some room in our schedule tonight for open forum. We usually give an opportunity for the public to come up. I will say, tonight, we've got a couple of public hearings concerning different things, and we have an appeal hearing. And if you're here to talk about those things or come to participate in those parts of the agenda, we'd like to ask that you wait till those items come here before the board. But this is general comments, our opinions, statements, questions you can ask. Might not get many answers here tonight. But you can say about what's on your mind pertaining to Surrey County civic government here, and we'll give you two or three minutes. So if there's any takers and anybody wants to come up to open forum and tell us what's on your mind, now's the time. We welcome you to come forward. Okay. Seeing no takers, we will close tonight's section and opportunity for the open forum. Thank you very much. At this time, moving right along, I am going to ask our county attorney, Ed Wolts, and our development services attorney, Howard Jones, if you will, to set the stage and address the audience tonight and the commissioners about what we're going to do concerning the appeal hearing concerning Crystal Ritter and the abatement of a public health and safety nuisance at 791 Galax Trail in Mount Airy, if you will, gentlemen.
Hey, good evening, Chairman, members of the board, members of the public. Tonight, we have an appeal from a notice of violation of the Health and Safety Nuisance Ordinance at Section 92 of the Surrey County ordinances. And that appeal was filed by Crystal Ritter, who is the owner of record of property at 791 Galax Trail. This proceeding is not like a legislative hearing or a rezoning. This is an adversarial hearing, and it's quasi-judicial. And I don't represent, I'm not here to advise the board tonight. I'm here to represent Development Services. So I'm wearing an adversarial hat tonight. The board's advice should come from the county attorney, Ed Wolts. But it's just important to remember, and I will turn this over to Ed in a moment, that the appellant, Ms. Ritter, has rights to present her case and to cross-examine witnesses if she wishes to. The board and I have a right to present our case and to put on witnesses and cross-examine witnesses as well. However, the guiding principle is the only thing that should be considered by this board tonight is substantial competent and material evidence. So personal attacks, criticisms that are irrelevant, the board has the jurisdiction to, just like a judge would, to control the dignity of the proceedings. So having said that, I'd like to turn this over to the county attorney.
This board does not deal with quasi-judicial hearings very often, and I thought it might be helpful to give you some pointers that come from the North Carolina Local School of Government, Coats Cannon's log. Every quasi-judicial decision shall be based upon competent material and substantial evidence in the record. This decision-making body is acting like a trial court based on the evidence and the information that has been shared with you in advance and with the Ritters. This board builds the record upon which its decision is based. In the event that this is appealed to Superior Court, then the record that we are creating tonight is what will be considered on the appeal. That's why we have a court reporter here making a verbatim transcription of what's going on. The information that has been distributed includes binders, photographs, diagrams, and all of that information is subject to consideration. We need to be clear here that because this is a quasi-judicial proceeding, some of the evidence in the record is good, including the application, factual testimony from opposing parties, expert opinion testimony, and some is incompetent, immaterial and insubstantial. And that would be opinions expressed by laymen that aren't experts. This board cannot take that into consideration. It may make its way into the record, but it can't be considered. Again, the board must base its decision on competent material and substantial evidence that's properly produced. Do you have any particular questions about those guidelines?
Back to you. Thank you. Chairman, may I proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay. Before I begin, you have a binder that was served on the Ritters with 16 attachments. You were served that with the agenda, and in that are videos and various other things which are permitted to be served ahead of time, as long as a copy is served on the appellant, which was done here. Also, tonight, on the desk in front of you, and a copy has been given to Crystal Ritter, is a copy of a Google map. I'm just going to be using, taken off the internet, using for illustrative purposes. Dr. Ackerman's CV, he'll be testifying tonight. An affidavit of the, there is a picture of a pig with three rats in your binder. The person that took that photo came down with strep throat yesterday and had to submit an affidavit, and that's been supplied to you. And there's also a cat video that I am being referring to with one of my witnesses. So the procedures tonight should be, because the county has the burden, okay, in seeking upholding of this, the county should go first and present its case, and then the appellant is entitled to present their case. So, before going any further, I would like to call Tyler Swain to the front as our first witness. And all the witnesses will need to be sworn in tonight.
Stand on the back. Where to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, help me, help me fly.
So could you state your name for the record?
My name is William Tyler Swain.
And if you could just get a little closer, I have a problem too. And are you a licensed private detective, private investigator?
I am. I'm licensed to the state. I'm a licensed private investigator.
And how long have you been a licensed private investigator?
I've been licensed for about eight years.
About eight years?
Yes.
And after that, you worked with a private investigator for many years too, correct?
Through that time, I've worked with several. Yes, sir.
And were you retained by Surrey County to videotape the Ritters' residence with regard to the animal situation on it?
I was, yes, sir.
Okay. And was it your understanding, the reason or your retention was that the Ritters refused the county access without a warrant?
Yes, sir, it was.
Okay, so it was your understanding that the video was being taken in order to supply to the court in order to obtain a search warrant, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And so did you, in fact, conduct surveillance and a video, produce a video?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay. And you then provided that to the county attorney, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you prepared a report, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that, basically, that report is your standard procedure that you do for all court cases, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the report itemizes different things that you observed that you thought were noteworthy at the time on the different days, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that investigation concluded in September of last year, right?
Yes, sir, it did.
Okay. And then a copy of that investigative report in the flash drive has been attached as provided in the binders to the county commissioners, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you reviewed the video on the flash drive before providing it to the county attorney, correct?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay. And is that flash drive, with the video on that flash drive, an accurate representation of what you saw during your investigation?
Yes, sir, it is. That is correct.
Okay. I don't have any questions, Ms. Ritter?
I can ask you questions?
Certainly.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, good night, please.
Yes.
Ms. Ritter.
So we only have one mic here. So, right, so.
If you will, will you mind pulling the mic down for, or help her pull the mic down about right? And Ms. Ritter, if you will, speak into the microphone so that people viewing, listening here and out in the viewing audience, you might be able to be more easily heard for the record. So if you will, go ahead with your.
And be sworn in first.
Okay, swing in with.
Getting her, she needs to get her binder.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, Sandy, if you will.
Okay, um, where's your rock, please? Where to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, help me fly. I do. All right, so you are a private investigator. Okay, do you know the difference between a back door and an animal door? Then why were you saying that the animals were coming out my back door?
Using that.
No, they weren't. No, they weren't. There is no way they can get, there is no way they can get from there up to my upstairs. The door that you said was my back door that was left open, that was available to the goats 24 hours a day, is an old workroom.
Excuse me, objection. Questions for the witness can be asked, but then arguing and testifying, there's a time for that testimony, and that will be when Ms. Ritter testifies.
I'm not arguing. I'm just stating a fact that he doesn't know a door, a correct door, because he said that my animals were coming out of my back door.
Okay.
Okay.
Set the parameters. Gentlemen, help us set the parameters here for Ms. Ritter and give her some guidance on what she can and cannot say and do.
From the Development Services point of view, there is certainly a time for Ms. Ritter to come up and testify, and she will have that opportunity.
Well, I'm showing that he doesn't know clearly what a back door looks like, because clearly, clearly, it was not my back door.
Okay, well, and I understand this can be difficult, a difficult distinction, but this will be prolonged and disjointed unless we follow the following rules. You get to ask a question of the witness. If you disagree with the witness, okay, then you have to put on evidence to that when it's your turn to put on evidence. But you can't argue and you can't testify during the questioning. That's just our objection, but I'll defer to the chairman and the county attorney.
How do I show that it's not my back door when all the people there in January saw clearly that it was not my back door?
Ma'am, you will have an opportunity to testify. That's what you're doing now. You're supposed to be asking questions of this.
Okay, well, I clearly showed he doesn't know a door from a door. Okay, you stated.
Next question.
Okay. What day did you see rats on my property of the five days you were there? The fifth visit, correct?
Yes.
So you saw no rats on my property the first four visits?
I did not.
Okay, only the fifth visit you saw rats.
That was one of the times. I thought we saw them twice.
Okay, twice. Okay. And you noted on Friday, July 28th, 2023, at 4:11, that you saw other different goats walking around my property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you noted again, the back door was open the entire time, which we established was not my back door. That was clearly an animal door, clearly where the animals lived. That was approved by Animal Control, I can state.
Same objection.
Okay. All right. You didn't notice the housing on the goats? Okay, you would not approve? Okay, Animal Control did approve.
Objection.
Animal Control did approve.
Again, we. Ask a question. If you don't like the answer, you're stuck with it.
Well.
All right, next question, Ms. Ritter.
Okay. I did not know I was going to have allowed to ask questions, so that's why I have to take some time. And especially, I was only given other information just today, so you have to bear with me and give me time.
I understand. We bearing with you. It was kind of new ground for all of us, but go right ahead with your questions.
Okay. Okay, you noted, investigator noted, you began surveillance near the tennis court. You were in my backyard?
No.
But why does it say in the backyard?
I was on your backyard, I was not in there.
But it states, it says here.
All right, he's answered the question. He saw your backyard, but he wasn't on it. Next question.
Okay, but his report that he's referred to does say he was in, okay?
Well, I'm not sure what the report says, but the report speaks for itself.
The report says, investigator says, began surveillance near the tennis court in the backyard of the subject's residence.
Tennis court is located in the backyard.
But it says.
Objection, asked and answered.
Okay, let's move along. Let's go on to the next question, please.
Okay. So they say that my water system was incorrect or wrong, but did you observe that they had water?
Water in a big pool were all in.
Not all. Did you notice that there were buckets on the property? Okay, all right. Did you notice that there was a duck pool on the property?
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
No, no, a duck pool is different from a kid's pool. Oh, and how many pools did you notice on the property? Only one. Hmm, okay. I asked and he answered, which are incorrect answers, but it's, I'm allowed to say that. Okay. Why did you note in the report an unidentified female outside the residence hanging up clothes?
No.
But you noted that I was hanging up clothes?
Yeah.
Okay. Why did you say that I had dirt or soot on my face and hands?
My position affected.
From your position? And your position was where?
Surveillance on your residence.
On my residence.
Surveillance on your residence, but I was never on your property.
Where would you take the surveillance from?
Several different spots around your property.
Okay, can I ask where exactly that was taken, where your surveillance was from?
From the neighborhood.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you, by the way, by saying I'm in my mid-30s. Thank you. That was nice.
Okay, next question.
Okay. Were all your surveillances taken at feeding time? Okay, were any taken at feeding time?
During.
Okay, when were your report?
When did you say feeding time? Actually, watching you feed the animals? No?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
There was food.
Okay, I overfeed them. Yeah, I do overfeed them. Jenna's constantly telling me that, that I overfeed them, I waste like that. What was the primary time? You said you went, you investigated various times. Yes, and if I could say for the court that they all were in the afternoon, except for one on a Sunday, 9:56. I'm answering his question. I asked him, and he didn't know. Or no, he stated there in the report. So if he can't state the times, then I felt I had to.
All right.
Isn't that right?
Well, I'm not sure about that, but I think we're at the next question now anyway, aren't we?
Okay.
All right.
So you can only say what was on on the report at these times from 3 o'clock on until the latest, it's according to the report. There was a Friday at 7:54 PM. Okay. Okay, so you cannot say for certain if I've given them fresh water that day? You cannot say for certain I fed my animals? You cannot say for certain that I've given them fresh hay that day? Okay, and can you say for certain how many animals were on the property?
One, give it time, give it time to, I was out there, yes.
Okay, but you own, you only saw rats on the fifth day?
Then, sorry.
That was in January. Okay, and how many rats did you see in January? Several, three? Six? Okay. All right. Did the Surrey County try to catch any of them that day?
The rats?
Yeah. Okay. All right. Were the, uh, vets wearing hazmat suits during that time you were there in January? Okay. All right, so did you see any geese on my property?
Geese?
Yes. Okay, I was told I had geese. Did you see any of my dogs? Did you, did you see any cats? But even in your report and going to surrounding neighborhood homes, you could not see in the, to the total depth of the property, what was going on there? So all the, all the way in the back, yes? No, 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 all the way on the other side of the tennis court. You were able to see, okay? Could you see up the hill from the neighbor's property clear? Interesting, okay. All right, I think those are all the questions I have. I know you said you observed a goat whose stomach appeared to be bloated out and breathing heavily. Where was that? In the tennis court? Oh, that tells me it was my senior citizen, Mr. Goat. Okay. Yeah, he, he's lived a long life.
Back to your question, I'm not, dogs when I was conducting surveillance. Search warrant, there were several dogs in the house.
Correct, correct, they had. Okay, you only- Okay. And you only saw the dogs because my daughter had to put them into the house. Okay. All right, I think that is it right now with the back questions.
Finish your questions. Give us guidance, guys, what happens now?
Just have one, uh, one redirect.
All right.
You could just, and you can stay up here, Ms. Ritter, instead of walking back, because you're allowed to. You have a question about what I redirect. Uh, Mr. Swain, um, when you were there for the, uh, surveillance for the administrative search warrant, um, you have no idea if there were any other rats on the property at other times, do you?
I do not.
And the property, uh-
Raise your microphone if you will, please.
The property was severely overgrown, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and your report, uh, lists what you thought was noteworthy at those times. But as a matter of fact, your surveillance tape, which is in the binder, uh, that Ms. Ritter has, uh, in her arm, has the date and time indicated on the videotape, correct?
Correct, timestamp.
Okay, I have no other questions.
I'd like to redirect.
And i- if it is limited to what I've, just the questions I asked, I believe that is the rule.
If you will, pull the microphone down, please.
Just to point out, just because I got a thing to look at, doesn't mean I can. I don't have a computer. I can't look at anything you've given me. So now you're going to the redirect you said about the, the, the dogs and everything. Now, my brain is, I have to bear with me, uh, with the ADHD. I'm trying to remember his words. Um, redirected about the animals, no, rats, okay. He redirected about the rats, okay. When he said you never saw them any other time, what?
Objection, mischaracterizes what I said.
All right, let's, let's get back to a specific question.
Okay, you only saw the rats on that fifth day and at the warrant?
Correct.
Okay.
When I was conducting surveillance at your house, obviously I did not seen, so I did not stay out here for hours.
Okay.
So my surveillance was one to two hours. But during those times, I did not-
Okay.
Not testified, the rats were there, but the fifth time I was there, well, it was in the circle.
Okay, he mentioned overgr- grown grass. Was there overgrown grass on all the property?
No, the, the tennis court, it's not everything.
Okay, was the backyard overgrown, grown? Okay, and the side yard was overgrown?
Chicken cordon, some of it, not all of it. The front yard was, was very empty.
Mm-hmm, that's our next pasture to open up.
Okay, more questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
At this point, uh, we'd like to turn the witness over to the county commissioners, uh, because I would like to follow protocol tonight if it's possible, and that is once the questions have been asked by appellant and me, then I think it's appropriate the county commissioners to ask any questions they have, and if they don't, allow the, then allow the witness to leave uh, the hearing. That's the way we do it in court.
All right.
I'd like to turn this witness over if the county commissioners have any questions of-
Okay, gentlemen, uh, any, any questions?
I have one, Mr. Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Johnson, please.
Uh, when, when the county, uh, you was, uh, hired by the county to do your, do your work, uh, is your liberty to choose the time and how much time or was anything required?
It was not. So I, I picked diff- you know, different times during the day.
Your free rein?
Yes, sir.
Do that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Swain? Any other questions here for Mr. Swain? I don't think we have any other questions for Mr. Swain. All right.
In this-
Counselor.
Can this witness be excused?
This witness, if it's good with you, it's good with us, this witness can be excused.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Swain. Okay, proceed, please, Howard.
I would like to call, uh, the Director of Development Services, Marty Needham. Good evening, um, Director Needham, could you state your name for the record and your position that you hold with the county?
My name is Marty Needham, I'm the Director of Development Services for Surrey County.
Hey, and Director Needham, um, in the binder is a letter from you to the county manager, Kristinoff, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and is that a letter that you sent pursuant to, to the nuisance ordinance, advising the ca- the county manager that you felt that a, that, that based upon Dr. Brenniger's affidavit, uh, that a nuisance violation, notice of violation and abatement needed to issue?
That is correct.
Okay, and did you receive a letter back from the county manager pursuant to the ordinance, and is that a copy of that in the binder?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Did you subsequently, uh, issue a notice of violation to, uh, both Crystal Ritter, the owner of the property, um, and Jenna Ritter, uh, as well?
I did.
Okay, and did your, uh, was your notice of violation based on your, your, based heavily on the opinion, the expert opinions of Doctors Brenniger and Ackerman?
It was.
Okay, as a matter of fact, much of the language from that notice of violation comes directly from Dr. Brenniger's affidavit, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, um, if I could, I would like to call the board's attention to the PowerPoint. And what we have here, and I'm would like, would like Director Needham to remain where he is for just a couple moments. So what we have here is a picture of Galak Trail, Galak's Trail, which is taken from the video that was taken in January of 2024 at the administrative search warrant. That is the front of the property. Okay, and the first point, uh, that the, uh, that I would make on behalf of Development Services is that this is not a farm, commissioners. And this is a hoarding situation on a residential lot with a rat infestation. And I will demonstrate that with the evidence that's in the binder and the witnesses I will call tonight. We'll also demonstrate, hopefully to your satisfaction, this is a serious situation. This is a perfect storm for the transmission of disease. We have a small lot next to vulnerable populations with a rat infestation. Garbage, trash, mattresses, feces, hoarding and overcrowding of animals, co-mingling of species in a very small area, and contaminated food and water and sharing of the same by all those species in that small area. So first I would like, Director Needham, uh, I've said there's a small lot here. Uh, you reviewed the tax card, which is a copy of, is in the binder, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and, uh, is this slide correct that tax card says there's point, uh, uh, point 87, eight, point 87, tens, or point 87 acres or 37, 37,897.2 square feet?
That is correct.
And the, the house print, did you, did you plot out the house print?
It's actually stated on the tax card.
Okay, and what does it state on the tax card?
It gives a size for the main body of the house, the porch, and another room, and it totals 1,980 square feet.
Okay, and the, did you plot out how large the, uh, front yard and the driveway is?
Yes, I have a software program on my computer, AutoCAD, and I downloaded a photo from the GIS map of their property, and I sized it to scale. And then drew a border around the front yard and got a proximity of the square feet of the front yard. And same thing for the, uh, tennis court.
Okay, so 9,700 square feet is the approximate size of the driveway in the, in the front yard, correct?
That's correct.
When you subtract that out and the, and the house footprint, you're left with about six tenths of an acre, correct?
That's correct.
And of that six tenths of an acre, about 7,000 square feet is a dilapidated tennis court, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So the next point I would demonstrate to the board is that this, this lot, uh, and this rat infestation is near vulnerable populations. It's close to, it's, it's close to the Willow Hill Apartments, the Northern Wellness, Wellness Center, Northern Pediatrics and a dentist office, and also smat dab up next to the neighbors. Yes.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna call a, uh, hard, hard five-minute break. Okay, folks, thank you for, uh, hanging with us here. We're gonna open the meeting back up, and with that said, I'm gonna turn it back over to Howard Jones, our attorney. Mr. Jones.
Okay, I have conferred with, uh, Crystal Ritter and with the county attorney. We have, uh, a medical situation for Ms. Ritter's daughter, and there is a paramedic here. And Ms. Ritter, Ms. Ritter, I have your consent to continue this hearing until July 15th, correct? I'm sorry, this will be recessed, it will start back that Monday night at 6 o'clock. You won't receive another notice, you just need to be here, and we're gonna recess until then. Is that okay with the county attorney? 15th. Okay, well, ma'am, we, 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 that's when we're doing it too, and that's when it's being continued. So there'll be, there'll be no further hearing tonight, and you are released tonight.
Okay, uh, this hearing will be recessed until the appointed time of July, the meeting, the regular meeting of July the 15th. Here, same time, same place. Uh, and this part of the appeal hearing is now in recess. Next item. And any of you folks, we won't hang around, you're certainly welcome, but this part of our meeting has been recessed, and, uh, if you would, if you wanna find your way out, just make yourself, just make yourself at home here. I'll excuse anybody that needs to leave. Yes, thank you.
Chairman, may I be excused and may Director Needham be excused?
You may be excused, and Director Needham, you may be excused as well.
Thank you, chairman.
Um, let's take another, let's take another five-minute break till we, till we get cleared up here. Thank you. Okay. Let our meeting get back into action here. Uh, sorry about all of the, uh, situation here tonight for everyone, but we will ask Ms. Penny Harrison, our tax administrator for Surrey County, to come up. Penny, and tell us what's on your mind.
I have a few, uh, foreclosures I would like to present tonight, excuse me, and, uh, they are ready to be sent to the Kenya Law Firm. I have, uh, presented to you in a packet with a list and a map and a description of value and taxes that are due. And I am hoping to send these over for, begin the foreclosure process with your approval.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, you've heard the request of our tax administrator to be able to send the list that they've accumulated that has grown to five years or older in delinquent real property and personal property taxes uh, for these listings. Uh, I will just re- remind me, I guess, and myself and all of us, Penny, after, uh, is it after how many years the county cannot go back and collect delinquent taxes?
10 years.
10 years. And in order for us to get started, to be able to collect these delinquent taxes, we, you, they usually get really uh, serious on your radar after about, you, you, you really don't get excited, I mean, you get excited, but it doesn't rise to this level until there's been about five years of delinquent taxes. Is that normally the situation?
Yes, we send several notices, we call them, we, um, try to make payments with them. Uh, we send pre-foreco- pre- foreclosure letters. We do numerous things trying to work out anything possible before we have to foreclose.
And all of those things that you just, uh, afore mentioned have been executed here, these are five years and or older?
Yes, sir.
You have sent out these certified letters, you have called these people on the phone, you've spoken to some of them personally?
Yes.
Try to make arrangements for payment, but after five years, you have had no payments on these, this list that you've sent us tonight to be considered for foreclosure?
That is correct. We have notes on everything.
Okay, gentlemen, you guys have, uh, had a copy here within your packet. I will entertain action. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
The motion that we, uh, approve the fol- the following list presented by our tax administrator, uh, for foreclosure.
Okay, and these will be turned over to the Kenya Law Firm, and, uh, then there'll still be an opportunity after he serves notice to these individuals.
They can pay at any time.
Any time to stop foreclosure.
That's correct, they can pay up- They can pay up to the time that the sale is finalized.
All right. I have a motion from Commissioner Bill Gohens to turn this list that you've referred over to the Kenya Law Firm for whom we rely on delinquent taxes and foreclosure proceedings. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, second for Commissioner Eddie Harris. Any discussion, any questions, any comments, any further, anything else?
I just have a question.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Jones.
Penny, the Kenya Law Firm, with these 23 here, what's an average time? I mean, how much time do they usually take? Would you, an average?
It normally takes usually six to eight months to do. It's just according, if there's heirs' properties, you know, it takes a while to serve. If they have to appoint a guardian ad litem, it's just different circumstances. Yeah, but it could sometimes take up to 12 months. But it's just according to the situation.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And these properties will be properly posted with a sign as well as advertised in the Elkin Tribune and the Mount Airy News. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, I'll have pictures of everything and copies of where it is in the newspaper.
And photographs of the sign by the property?
Yes, sir.
And on the county website as well?
Are you wanting the pictures of the?
No, just the cell itself?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Well, this doesn't happen until Kenya does all their due.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, and I will bring it back before it's sold to give you sale dates and things like that and show proof that it's been posted at the property.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor in a second to send this packet of delinquent taxes to Kenya Law Firm. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries unanimously, and thank you, Penny. Okay, moving right along. Chris Knopf, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item tonight is to hold a public hearing on the fiscal year 2425 budget. On June 3rd, the recommended budget was presented to the board. And on June 11th last Tuesday, the board held a work session, just a little over three hours, to pool on the recommended budget and make a number of changes. The tax rate was recommended to remain unchanged. And I'm gonna review for you. And each of you have this summary, the items that were discussed on June 11th. A consensus was reached at that time on these items. First was to set the school's current expense amount to 1,320 per student. That's an increase from 1,280 currently, so a $40 increase. That will also carry over for the charter schools allocation and the virtual charter schools. Also decided to add four new school resource officer positions to allow for one resource officer per elementary school in the county school system. That amounts to an increase of $439,014. Also, as was discussed on June 3rd amongst the board, an increase in the registered D's budget in the amount of $11,648. Also, it was decided to increase general fund contingency by $130,500. This amounts to a transfer of funds and dedicated line items for SEEMS, Tri-County, Foothills, Yoke Fellow, the Shepherd's House, Helping Hands, Grace Clinic, Three Medical Ministries, Echo Ministry, and American Red Cross. From those line items, the general fund contingency where it will be held until a process can be developed to evaluate public purpose dollars and how those can be justified by each of those agencies. And that is something we think we'll get back to you later this year. So the total?
Talked about in that meeting, I'm sorry, Chris, but maybe it could be no earlier than January because it would be October, November, possibly before you get the sales tax figures, and it may take that long to collect data. Does that still stand with your folks?
I don't think it'd be later than that, but it just depends on how quickly we work through it. It could be a little sooner, but we think it'll be end of the calendar year. The total change is $544,437 increase to the recommended budget. In addition to this, the consensus of the board is to increase Elkin City Schools' tax rate to 12.6 cents. Also, to increase the Pine Ridge Volunteer Fire District tax rate to 8.2 cents. Also, to approve recommended fee schedule changes for emergency services and the Health and Nutrition Center. The Health and Nutrition Center increases were approved by the Board of Health recently. Therefore, the new general fund total for the fiscal year 2425 budget would be $103,517,053. The amount of general fund needed to balance the budget would be $7,301,316. And that's your new number, your new total. Mr. Chairman?
Okay, and I think this will require a public hearing. And so with that said, I would like to say now is the time, and I will open the public hearing for comments, questions, anybody's input for the 2425 budget fiscal year. So the public hearing is now open. If you will. Well, we're not gonna ask you. We know your name and how to get in touch with you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody, yes, sir, go right ahead. Chief Deputy Larry Love?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'll be real quick tonight. The sheriff had a previous engagement, and we really wasn't prepared to be here tonight. But this afternoon, about 3:30, was made aware that there wasn't something in the budget that we thought there was. After some talks with County Manager Knopf, and we'd just like to take just a moment of your time. Back at the retreat, we talked to you about the detention staffing. Totally understand that y'all were probably tired of hearing this request. However, after six months of being in the new facility, we think it is a critical situation for the staffing. We had presented in our budget to the county manager for five more detention officers. We understand totally that the county tax receipts are projected to level out. However, we believe this is a critical need. Without these positions, there's a few things that could be in jeopardy. And one is the statewide misdemeanor confinement program, especially the litter pickup that all of us is wanting to do. Addition of some mental health and substance abuse programs. Any of the educational programs that now, you know, we have a facility for it. We'd really like to try to add some of that. Like I sort of touched on in the retreat, y'all was gracious enough, and you did add four of those positions that we'd originally asked for. And that's been great. We appreciate it. We've added those positions. We've maintained the majority of those. We have lost a couple here recently due to taking jobs with a little better, what they thought was better for them. A couple of them went to state jobs. But we are actively filling those as we speak. One of the other things I want to touch on is back in February at the retreat, when I talked to you, our number, I think, was 257, and we was surprised about it jumping up that high. This morning is 297. Several days, we've been over 300 in the last couple of months. One of the questions I had been asked before, we have been asked, and there is not a specific requirement of an officer ratio, but I have pulled numbers from some other ones. And right now, we currently have 33.3 inmates per officer. Just to give you an example, some of the other counties, some of the closest ones to us, of course, is Arnett County, which is, they have a 324-bed facility. They have a 16 inmate-per-officer ratio. Cleveland County has a 324 capacity. They have 16.7. Catawba County has 13.2. Rockingham County has a 22. And Bladen County has a 26. And Orange County has a 9. Currently, we have the 33. Even if we add the five positions we're asking for, that brings us to 28.5 inmates per officer. Like I said, with, one of the things that we have added, and I told, I think, the last time we was front of you, we talked about adding up in the misdemeanor confinement. We have done that. That's doing very well. We upped it to 30. But right this morning, we had 25 that we're getting paid for. And that's a good average number. They don't knock to fill you plum full. They have some spots in case they need you. Currently, that's given us $40 a day for those 25 inmates, which, you know, a year equals $365,000. If we could add the litter, and I know y'all are aware of this, if we could add the litter, that would up that to $60 a day, which, you know, for a year's time, that's $547,500. Once again, I apologize to you for coming to you during this 11th hour. Like I said, no fault to anybody, I don't think, but we just didn't realize that it wasn't being presented to you guys. So after discussion with the county manager today, we wanted to make sure that we at least notified you that that was our request. We would like for you to consider that moving forward.
Thank you, Chief Deputy.
Thank you.
You can hang around if I have questions.
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, questions, comments?
I do have what that would cost, if you want copies of that. Look over it, make sure you think it's right. Thank you.
Yeah, hold on. I, for one, would have some more questions, like, you know, the state misdemeanor program, bringing prisoners here, actually looking for prisoners to bring here to put in that program so as we might get reimbursement from the state. And so as we might transition some of these eligible candidates to the litter program, how much money that might bring in, and how many you have now, and how many you would anticipate having if you were at full capacity. And we certainly, I'm just speaking for me. I don't, you know, it is the 11th hour here. We're kind of fast-tracking to move along with the fiscal budget vote tonight. I personally am not saying no or never. I'm just personally saying I would like to send this one back for some consideration to you guys for to answer some of these questions. Maybe we'll talk about it at a later date. I, for one, am not looking to take action tonight. But, gentlemen, at your pleasure, I'll let y'all weigh in on this.
I'm gonna agree with Chairman Tucker. I certainly, I have a few questions. I'll ask one right now. Y'all submit a budget.
Yes.
But y'all are at liberty to do what y'all want to with that budget. Is that a correct statement? I mean, we don't tell you what to do or not do. I mean, well, for example, if you really desperately needed five detention officers right now, I mean, exactly right now, y'all have the liberty to take five off patrol, put them in there. I mean, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but we can do, yes, we could do with what officers we have, yeah.
The way you want to, all we do is, with the county resources, we fund the search department and the detention center altogether.
Correct.
But y'all make the decisions on personnel, where they at, when to use them, where at, and all those things. Is that a correct statement?
That is correct.
Okay, well, I'd like to, I'm gonna go along with that. I'm looking forward to sitting down some more with y'all and just get some pertinent, I mean, you're telling me also that we're being paid $40 a day. Is that, you know, not now, but I'll ask the question. Is that, are we breaking even? Are we making any money? Or we still lose, I mean, on that? But we save that for a later time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, this is a public hearing on our budget. And, yeah, we got some questions, but since we wanted to reassure you, we have some questions before we ready to make an answer, at least part of us. We will save those specifics and those questions for a later time. Gentlemen, anything else here? Okay?
I just wanted to ask the deputy right quick. You are, you folks are working with ICE, Immigration and Customs Enforcement, right?
Absolutely.
And you are identifying illegal aliens that have criminal records and have committed serious crimes in Surrey County? And you have notified ICE? And you work with ICE at every opportunity to get rid of these people and get them back to their home countries? Is that correct?
Absolutely, 100%.
Okay, and your department is going to work with ICE? And I know there's legislation, I think, on a state level in regards to some of this as well. But I just wanted to make sure that we're not housing and feeding these people any longer we have to, and that they, you know, once their sentence is completed, that they are, ICE is notified so they can be deported.
We cooperate with ICE.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, thank you, Chief Deputy Love. Okay, anyone else for comment, question regarding the public hearing for our fiscal budget for the 2425 year? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. My name's Austin Love. I'll be co-representing the Surrey County Association of Arrested School Hoods and Mountain Park Rescue Squad. I did take the privilege of reading all 24 pages of the budget. And one of the things I did notice was there wasn't a single thing in there that I didn't think deserved it. I think that when we're balancing the budget, I know it's a difficult process. I get to see multiple facets of it. On the rescue squad side, we did notice a few disappointing shortcomings that I want to bring to your attention. We had requested a 7.5% increase, which is a general request. We try to keep up with inflation, the rising cost of operations. And then Mount Airy Rescue Squad had requested $25,000 to assist with paying for a paid person. And I know that's an ongoing project. I know Chief Webb and them have talked with that about you guys. And what I wanted to bring to your attention was, you know, in recent events, we have seen rescue really come to a rising need. Some of you may recall the Yakon River incident. Every squad was represented there. And, you know, it's without just general operational funding in general, you know, those are the kind of things we won't be able to pull off. And while I can't really speak to what each individual squad would use that 7.5% for, I can speak for what we would do in Mountain Park, where we service a little over 4,000 residents, and we serve as the only rescue provider for 93% of the district and the only medical first response for about 90%. Mr. Harris, I know that you live very locally, and I believe your business, I know friends, family live there as well. And we do all we can to service our district at a pretty efficient rate. Mountain Park Rescue Squad this year will be taking about 54,000 of that total allocation. We do receive the smallest allocation out of squads just based on population and call volume. And what we wanted to do is, we have longed to ask the question, how will we handle the declination of volunteers? And at Mountain Park, our goal with our increase this year was to try something different. Rather than asking for paid people, this increasingly popular demand, I've noticed, we would instead try to address the barriers to volunteerism. We were lining up contracts to be able to get people fit for duty, people medically cleared for duty. And we were hoping to be able to begin negotiations where we could talk about ways that the county could assist, ways, and could we talk about volunteer time for staff once a month, eight hours a month, or whatnot? Could we incentivize businesses to allow responders to run calls? And really just address the actual issues to volunteerism and bring the communities back together rather than just throwing paid people at it? While I'm not disagreeing that we should have paid first responders, fire, rescue EMS, at some point, you know, that demand only grows, and we are a small, humble county. Just under 72,000 citizens, from what I recall from the last census, you know, that's a heavy price to pay to fully staff every emergency service agency in the county. And so I just wanted to, you know, not necessarily ask for you guys to reconsider tonight. I believe the previous speaker had thought we're at the 11th hour, and I think you guys did work hard on the budget. And I do like what I saw in it. And I am grateful that we did get an increase. Going forward, I just want us to consider. Going forward, I just want us to consider, and I would love to talk with you guys even more in the future, about, um, if we don't address this volunteerism issue, especially in Mountain Park, you will never have me come before you and ask for a paid person in Mountain Park. Um, but what I may have to come before you and tell you is that there's no volunteers left, and that will leave four thousand of my neighbors, my friends, people I've worked with and connected with, without service, without rescue. We may be able to consolidate with another rescue squad, maybe not, but at the end of the day, that's just a liability that falls to, I don't know who. That's never been an issue before, and as long as I'm chief, my goal is to make sure it doesn't become an issue for my four thousand people, including you, Mr. Harris. Um, I care deeply about it. Um, and I really do think that this was an oversight, maybe I wish we could have got a little bit further ahead of and had discussions with you guys. But as far as we are concerned, we are a little disappointed with what we saw. But overall, we would love to work with you guys, you know, maybe not paid people, maybe not extravagant increases, but I'd like to work efficiently with you guys to create the most lean means of restoring volunteerism, rather than replacing it, or rather than doing away with it altogether. That's all I have for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else for public hearing concerning the twenty-four, twenty-five budget? Anyone else, any takers? There being none, we want to close the public hearing concerning the, uh, fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five budget. And with that, I am looking for action. Uh, I think we, uh, have a couple of motions prepared, if we want to go along with the manager's recommendation. And with that, I am looking for a motion for action.
Motion that we adopt the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five budget ordinance, and this ordinance will reflect the June eleventh consensus changes to the recommended budget. Anything additional, of course, following this hearing, which we've not added, so, um, I make, I'd make that as a motion.
Okay. And Mr. Manager, will that be a two-part motion if we, uh, two motions? Okay, all right. So, motion number one, I have a motion from Commissioner Bill Goins, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second of Commissioner Marion, any discussion? Comment? None, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Make a motion that we instruct the assistant county manager to provide a two percent cost of living increase for all graded employees and elected officials, and to approve the position classification plan for the twenty-two, twenty-five by making changes in adjust salaries according to the recommendations in the approved budget effective July one, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, gentlemen. Motion number two concerning the budget, have a motion, looking for a second.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Bill Goins, second from Commissioner Eddie Harris, any discussion?
I'd just like to thank county staff again for, uh, the hard work on the budget. Um, and as, uh, Mr. Johnson always says, uh, we appreciate our citizens being very responsible and paying their taxes. Uh, it's always very positive for Surrey County. Um, and as the county manager has, um, told us, and we've seen in the revenue numbers, that sales taxes seems to be, and revenue seem to be flattening out. Um, the national economy seems to, um, be in, uh, continued inflation, uh, which is impacting our citizens, it has impacted the county budget. Um, a lot of this in here, the increases and some of those things are high, are from, uh, costs that are highly inflationary that, uh, all Americans are seeing, uh, from grocery prices to, uh, home prices. Um, and as I've said, uh, the, um, uh, one of the things that concerns me going forward is the inability of, um, young folks today, um, being able to be first-time home buyers. Uh, that is continuing to be, uh, uh, put out of reach for a lot of, uh, young couples in Surrey County and across the state and nation. But, uh, we're going to, uh, continue to be physically responsible in Surrey County, um, to, um, balance our revenues and our expenditures. Um, we do the very best we can, and I think this budget reflects a sense of fairness, and, uh, and, uh, I'm, uh, glad to support it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll say I like the, uh, budget, it's a, it's a process, appreciate all the county folks and county staff that work so hard to get it to this level. Um, you know, we might not have got it exactly as far with it as we would like to have, um, unless we decide to restrict the amount of dollars that it takes to fund it, all the ideas we heard were good ones. But sometimes you have to balance the, uh, request with the money available, or the ability to raise that money, and a lot of times that goes back to the tax base of the people, the good people of Surrey County that pay it. And so there is a, there is a, they're a moderate, uh, in-between on those two factors of request versus funding, and we tried to strike the best chord that we could, um, and I feel pretty good about it. Uh, you know, we can always, uh, look down the road at other requests and do the best we can, and I'm, I'm delighted that, once again, uh, we were able to provide more services, uh, and more dollars for the people in Surrey County in its various programs and departments. And we did that without raising taxes for the county citizen to, uh, pay more tax rate. So with that said, I have a motion and a second, I'm.
I'd just like to say that, uh, I, I appreciate everybody's hard work on the budget, and, uh, you gentlemen, it was a pleasure this year. We had a few discussions, but, uh, I believe it was asked, is this a hard no, or, or, or is this a no for the budget? It's a no, it's, it's just a little disagreement, but we, we worked through it all, and, uh, as Mr. Love just got through saying, we've got right at seventy-two thousand people, and this is the first time ever the budget has went over a hundred million dollars, a hundred and three-five, I believe. Um, that means business is good in Surrey County. Uh, we, we've tried to do good for the schools this year, uh, and we've got Dr. Steve Hall with us tonight, and thank you for the job you're doing over there, and, and, hope your wife continues to improve, and, uh, I know Dr. Reeves and, uh, Mr. Brown, Dr. Brown, I'm, all of them are pretty happy this year. Um, they were expecting around probably twenty bucks a pupil, and we, we give them forty, so we doubled probably their expectation, so, uh, it's, it's a pleasure to work with all this this year, and the outlook for Surrey County is, is, is strong, and, uh, we've got a lot of good things coming, and, uh, hopefully we can be strong for several more years. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Got a motion on the floor and a second. And the second motion concerning the fiscal budget here for twenty-four, twenty-five, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none, motion carries unanimously, and thank you. All right, uh, you folks want to plow on?
Yep.
All right. Mr. Manager, next item.
Is a scheduled public hearing for Project Vista, and before you open the hearing, I'll give a few details on what, uh, county is offering up potentially to be considered this evening, and then during the hearing, Mr. Moyer will come up from the EDP and give you some details, as much as he can, about the project. Project Vista is proposing a total investment of eighty million dollars. The fixed investment will be approximately twenty-five million, and the variable investment, or the personal property, a fifty-five million dollar investment. It's being proposed as a cash grant over eighty years, it's, um, it's a formula that's based on the amount of taxes that's, uh, expected to be paid by the project during that time. We anticipate that the cash grant will not exceed two million, fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars. We estimate the payback on that will be five point seven eight years, as you know, the payback must be no more than ten years, so that's a good return for a project of this size. And so, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you to open the public hearing.
Okay, we'll now open the public hearing concerning Project Vista. And with that said, any comments, please come forward, thank you. Mr. Blake Moyer, Surrey County Economic Development, thank you, sir.
You know, folks, uh, Blake Moyer, if we do number or address, number three, three, six, two, six, nine, three, eight, two, eight. Um, President and CEO of Surrey County Economic Development Partnership. I appreciate you all taking this public hearing for us tonight, um, this is an important project. This is an existing industry within Surrey County and within the city of Mount Airy. Um, we appreciate your time here, and I'm going to read through a couple of comments on the project, um, and then answer any questions you might have. Uh, Surrey County EDP has been in contact with its existing industry employer, who is interested in expanding their operations in the community. The project has been actively seeking a location since October of twenty-twenty-three. Surrey County EDP, city and county staff, as well as EDP NC, its Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, have met with the project on multiple occasions to confirm their needs and support their expansion in our community. The company associated with this request is an upstanding member of the business community, and has been in Mount Airy for over forty years, with extensive local ties and a quality reputation here in our community. The company is seeking to construct a new one-hundred-and-forty-thousand-square-foot building. The total investment for this project will exceed eighty million dollars of capital investment. This project does not include new jobs to the community, but is a retention of sixty existing jobs. This is a competitive project where the risk of not participating is that those jobs go somewhere else, this project goes somewhere else. This is a competitive project, and the, the project has looked at locations in other communities. Um, Surrey County EDP requests consideration of the cash incentives, uh, for Project Vista to select a site in Surrey County, and for any media questions regarding the matter, please direct those to Surrey County Economic Development Partnership. Uh, Board Chairman for Surrey County EDP would also like to speak, and he'll come after me after some questions, if you have any.
All right.
Any questions for me?
Questions? I believe we have any, Blake?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, next. Well, Peter, tell us your name, your title, your phone number, quickly.
Need a box here.
Oh, no, we can.
All right, my name is Peter Pecano, I am the, uh, chairman of the Surrey County EDP. That's my, my, uh, job on the side, but my primary job is as North Carolina president for First Community Bank. So been a banker in this town for over twenty-five years. Um, I've seen it grow. Project Vista represents a company that's been a key community cornerstone for many decades. I would tell you, it's part of the very fabric of our community. Through employment, engagement with our schools, and the support of community initiatives, this organization's been an impactful part of Surrey County. Surrey County is competing with other communities for Project Vista's investment, and the approval of incentives is one part of staying in the game. I can tell you that we are, it's very competitive, I cover twelve counties, and every single county is actually looking for business like this. Okay, so, Surrey County EDP's Board of Director supports the approval of incentives for Project Vista. We must do all we can to support the expansion of our existing employers, and continue to make Surrey County the best place to do business in North Carolina. Our community should feel proud to be considered for the next phase of this company's growth. We hope Project Vista chooses Surrey County to embark upon their bright future. Thank y'all, appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, sir.
While you're at it, how about bringing a, how about bringing a bank to Dobson?
Bringing a bank to Dobson?
Yes.
I'm gonna do all I can to do that, y'all.
Please do.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else for, uh, comment concerning Project Vista and the public hearing? Okay. No one else, we will now declare the, uh, public hearing for Project Vista closed. And you've heard the request, gentlemen, looking for action, your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we approve the incentive package, uh, presented to us for Project Vista.
Okay, motion from Commissioner Bill Goins to accept the package presented concerning Project Vista, do I hear a second?
I'll, I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, second from Commissioner Larry Johnson, any discussion? Being none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries unanimously, thank you, folks. Okay, Chris, uh, I believe we have an item coming up tonight, uh, for Elkin City Schools, and yeah, and I am going to recognize, uh, our Elkin City School, School Superintendent, Dr. Steve Hall, and our, also one of our honored guests, Board Member Jennifer Klein-Haskel from the Elkin City Schools. Uh, it's easy to see you folks when, uh, about ninety percent of the people take me up on my bill to do recess, so uh, with that said, would you guys like to come up when the manager presents your request, or would you like to help him present it? If you do, please, both of you feel free, or either one of you come up. Yes, sir, now, Chris, present your item, and then we'll let him go ahead.
Uh, he's here to present it.
All right, you're here to present it?
Sure.
All right, go for it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Steve Hall, uh, give me a phone number. Okay. Uh, Superintendent Elkin City Schools, um, it's a pleasure to be here this evening, it's always great to see you, fellas, and, uh, we greatly appreciate your support in Elkin. Um, uh, we spent our first night in our home last night in Elkin, um, feels good to be back in Surrey County. Um, felt good waking up and having a two-minute drive to work, instead of coming down the mountain, I tell you. Um, the request that we have here before you to, this evening, is concerning some, uh, past capital funds that you folks so graciously awarded Elkin City Schools, uh, before I even arrived. Um, there were several projects here involved. Um, one was a couple of roof projects that they kind of grouped together, and that, uh, original bid came in at about a hundred and seventy, a little over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, when, was all, all said and done, the, the project was a little over two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars. Um, on the flip side of that, um, we had a, from what I gather, an old oil tank at the elementary school that needed removal, and you had allocated funds for that. Uh, that project came in well under budget, which rarely happens, as we all know. Um, we also had a walk-in cooler project, uh, as well. Uh, so you can see different projects here, uh, that project came in under budget. Uh, so what we're asking is just a reallocation of those two projects that came in under budget. Uh, the tank removal, there's a little over thirty-six thousand dollars, uh, I believe left in that, or, no, it was, it was about thirty-six thou, it came in, uh, there's about twenty-nine thousand dollars left, I believe. Uh, no, sorry, I'm right, thirty-six thousand dollars left from the tank removal, and about eight thousand, eighty-six hundred dollars left from the walk-in cooler project. We would like to couple those together to just cover that overage that we had on our, uh, combined uh, roof projects that went over budget at two-hundred-and-ten-thousand. So that's, that was our request. Uh, not asking for any additional funds, these funds were already allocated to Elkin before I got here, like I said. So we'd just like to move those funds over and cover the, the overage on that roof project if possible. Thank you.
All right. Questions? Comments? Action? Gentlemen?
No problems, we can just see.
I believe this is in your neck of the woods, Commissioner Harris.
Well, it looks pretty straightforward to me, I, uh, you know, as Commissioner Tucker said, we've, um, done several different, uh, um, actions on these reallocation of funds, um, and, um, we don't have a, uh, a set policy in this, in this regard. Uh, so it looks like to me that you're asking to reallocate, is it thirty, thirty-nine thousand or thirty-six thousand?
It was thirty-six thousand from the, the, um, tank removal, that was left over, a little over thirty-six thousand, and eighty-six hundred, uh, left over from the walk-in cooler project.
Forty-some thousand, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And you're going to use it on the roof?
Yes, sir, to cover, cover the remaining, over the portion of that roof.
Okay, well, um, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm inclined to support this, it looks pretty straightforward, roof's a pretty serious business. I know where you have, um, um, uh, reformulated our capital, uh, uh, approach to, um, schools, the public school systems, uh, but this was all done before that reallocation, um, and, uh, so I'm, I'm going to support it.
Are you, is that in form of a motion?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion, uh,
All right.
to allow Elkin City Schools to.
Let's do that, any, any, or have a commotion, a motion for Commissioner Harris, do we hear a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Mark Marion, now, discussion, any more discussion, questions, comments? Uh, I'll just say that we appreciate you coming, and
Thank you, sir.
we appreciate you being good stewards of the money.
Thank you.
And we, we appreciate all of our schools doing that.
Yes, sir.
It's not like that we just get a kick out of bringing you back when you have some leftover, nor do we want to encourage you to figure out every way to spend every last dime of it.
Exactly.
We want something in the middle, and that is spend it as judicially and wisely, as, as judiciously and wisely as you can.
Yes, sir.
But then, you know, we appreciate your, uh, graciousness and, uh, honesty for coming back saying, you know, we did spend it as best we could, but we had a little leftover.
Yes, sir.
And then we're happy to, uh, let you use it for your next best project, and I think that's the way it ought to work. I think that's the way it ought to work, the school systems, for most county departments, that's the way it ought. That's the way it ought to work for the citizens. I appreciate your respectfully coming to the board and telling us you had a little savings, and we're happy to let you have it. So with that said, we have a motion on the floor in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, none, motion carries unanimously, and thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you, and thank you. Okay. Chris?
Next item is the information and possibly maybe action tonight, or at least at the very latest July meeting. But the Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference is August eighth through tenth. It's in Winston-Salem this year. So whoever attends on behalf of the county is the voting delegate this year can stay at home and not be on the road. I'm wondering tonight if you'd be willing to appoint a voting delegate or if it's something you want to take under consideration and come back and point that person in July.
We'll talk about it, gentlemen, thoughts? Looking for volunteers?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a college trip to Asheville for a few days, so I'm going to respectfully decline.
Mm hmm, others?
Mr. Chairman, I've had the opportunity three or four times to represent Surrey County and travel to Raleigh. I would graciously love for somebody else to do it. But I'm not complaining because Chris Tanott was with me every time, and we eat good.
Yeah.
We still got to be there and vote.
Yeah, I've been I've been knowing a couple of them, and the third, the herd is getting thinner. Gentlemen, any other? We got another opportunity for volunteers here before we decide to kick it down the road. August eighth through the
I don't think any of you have participated in the last four years.
That that sounds like a volunteer to me.
You've done such, you've done such a good job.
Is that a volunteer, Commissioner Marion?
I'll do it if Chris Alana-Gow came up.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, you be sure to feed him good.
Yeah, feed him really good, and and we thank you for your volunteerism, water spirit. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think we solved that for you, Mr. Manager. We're going to need to take action. I'll make a motion that we we select and graciously accept the volunteer duty from Commissioner Mark Marion to attend the August eighth through tenth NCACC Annual Conference in Winston-Salem. Okay. Motion and a second from Commissioner Bill Goins. Any discussion? None, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, none, thank you, sir. Congratulations.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, Chris?
Next item, just informational tonight, we'll need to talk about this again in July, but it's time to put together our legislative goals for the twenty five, twenty six legislative biennium. We are currently soliciting draft goals from department heads. If there are any that the county commissioners would like to submit to be included in your packet in July, just let me know over the next couple of weeks, and we will get that to you. I believe we have to have them in by September at the latest, so if we could get something finalized by August, that would be ideal. But just more of an informational item tonight that this is coming. Last item that I have, there's a memo in here for Andrew Wright on the boards and commissions. There are three here. I'll run through them, and then you all can debate and hopefully come up with some appointees. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, there's a two year term here. Daniel White has been filling that spot. He would ask that Bradley Key and his department be appointed. On the Northwestern Regional Library Board, there are some six year terms that are up for reappointment. Is that correct? Kelly Merritt, Jonathan Bledsoe, and Lisa DeReese. Those folks respectively are from Mount Airy, Dobson, Pilot Mountain. And finally, there's a seat coming open on the Surrey Community College Board of Trustees, and that's a four year term.
Okay, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would, as the Commissioner Representative on the Community College Board, and I've had individual discussions with my fellow board members. And I would, I have a new appointment to the Surrey Community College Board of Trustees. I'd also like to thank Mr. Jim Lewis for his service. Jim served eight years on the Community College Board, outstanding trustee, enjoyed working with with Mr. Lewis. And at this time, I'd like to thank Mr. Lewis for his service. And I would like to recommend that we appoint Ms. Tina Johnson to the Surrey Community College Board of Trustees. Tina is a resident of Mount Airy. And I think that's the appropriate response here for from a geographical perspective. So that's who I'm recommending. I'll make that motion, Ms. Tina Johnson, to the Surrey Community College Board of Trustees.
Okay, I have a motion for Commissioner Harris for a new appointment, Ms. Tina Johnson. Do I hear a second?
I'll be glad to second that, Mr. Chairman. She's a very good, outstanding community servant.
Okay.
She'll do a great job.
Second, my Commissioner Larry Johnson. Any discussion? None, all in favor of this appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none, appointment is made. Any anything else, gentlemen, on these along the lines of these?
Make a motion for the others.
You can do one if you'd like.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, that's Bradley Key, and to the Northwestern Regional Library Board, Kelly Merritt, Jonathan Bledsoe, and Lisa DeReese.
Thank you, Commissioner Goins. We have another motion to reappoint these various people to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council and the Northwestern Regional Library. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Second for Commissioner Marion. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none. Unanimously, these folks have been reappointed, and thank you, folks. Chris, anything else?
That's all I have after general county business. I believe there's a request for closed session.
Okay. Any Commissioner comments? I think I start, I'll start on this end tonight. Commissioner Marion?
Well, I made several comments a while ago, and thank, once again, thank everyone for participating in the budget and looking forward to upcoming year. And that's what I've got, and appreciate everybody coming out tonight. And come on back and see us. Thank you.
Good, Commissioner Goins?
Being the representative of Mount Airy, I'm going to read the proclamation for the Rotary Club of Mount Airy's seventy fifth anniversary day. Whereas Rotary Club of Mount Airy has served the community for three quarters of a century. Whereas since its inception in nineteen forty nine, Rotary Club of Mount Airy has upheld the highest ideals of Rotary International, dedicating itself to the principle of service above self. Whereas for seventy five years, the members of the Rotary Club of Mount Airy have worked to address the needs of the community. Whereas Rotary Club of Mount Airy has supported positive transformation embodying the spirit of collaboration and cooperation. Whereas through its various projects, programs, and partnerships, Rotary Club of Mount Airy has made a lasting impact on the lives of countless individuals, families, and organizations. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that on its seventy fifth anniversary, the Rotary Club of Mount Airy is celebrated and honored for its service, its dedication, its legacy of making a difference in the community. And witness area of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners do hereby declare July sixteenth, twenty twenty four, as Rotary Club of Mount Airy's seventy fifth anniversary day, and recognize all citizens to join in commemorating the momentous milestone with gratitude, joy, and renewed commitment to service. And this was adopted today, the seventeenth day of June, twenty twenty four, by the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. And our chairman will will sign that proclamation. So we appreciate all the, I know there's several Rotary, there's a sunrise and lunch, and but they all do a great job serving the citizens of of Mount Airy and Surrey County. It's not just Mount Airy, but they serve Surrey County, and we appreciate what they do for our county.
Thank you, Commissioner Goins, and we will sign that proclamation as read tonight. Commissioner Harris?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I also wanted to add in regards to Ms. Tina Johnson, our new appointee on the Surrey Community College Board, that she is a graduate of Surrey Community College, very proud graduate of Surrey Community College. And she actually served there as a student trustee on the board in late eighties, I think. So anyway, I wanted to say that. Also wanted to thank Dr. Steve Hall and Ms. Klein-Hexel for being here tonight. Always glad to see some folks from my into the county and hope you folks come again. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson? I've said it, this will be my ninth time. I'd like to give our county manager and all his staff another A for the work on their budget. That's nine As in a row for me, and I appreciate it. It's I see all the hard work that's been put into that, and you make it so plain and simple for us to comprehend and to understand. And I I think, again, thank you for it, and I'm blessed to live in Surrey County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Thank all you folks for coming, the other folks out watching our meeting, keeping up with it in other ways. It's always interesting, some of the topics we cover and the way we go about trying to get to the ends of the the best, the best solutions possible for some of the challenges that face this board. And this budget cycle has been interesting. It's it's, I've been on the board as well. This is my ninth budget, and they seem to get a little more expensive, and they seem to be a little more complicated every year. But so far, we threaded the needle, and I feel pretty good about it and appreciate you folks coming and your participation and all the county staff for all their participation in this new budget that we've just passed tonight and my fellow board members. You know, we got in, how many did we have? Five or six of these work sessions? You know, we didn't even have a fight one. Now, we had some strong words at time or two, but I don't know that anybody came to blows, did?
Liar, liar, pet on fire.
But anyway, appreciate the fellow board members and the camaraderie and working with you and all the county staff. And with that said, that will conclude tonight's meeting. Again, thank you for coming. We appreciate your participation. County managers, you got something to add?
We need closed session?
Yes, I believe we do need closed session. Looking for a motion to go into close?
Just to go in a closed session.
All right, motion, motion from Commissioner Bill Goins. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we are going to close. Thank you. Okay. We're back in session? Okay, with much gratitude for the for their service rendered, I'd like to make a motion that we remove from the Northern Regional Hospital Board of Trustees, the trustees of and that to include Teresa Lewis, Paul Patterson, Doug Cook, and Tom Riggs. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Bill Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? At the record show, the vote is unanimous. I'd also like to make a motion to add and effective immediately also to the Northern Regional Hospital Board of Trustees, Mark Rogers and Greg Perkins. And we will make both of these changes to be effective immediately. Do I hear a second?
Second. Chairman?
Yep.
And to eliminate two seats on the board.
And to eliminate two seats on the board, which would reduce the total number of seats by two.
Eleven.
To the total number of eleven from thirteen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Any opposed, none, no, unanimously. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion from Commissioner Bill Goins to adjourn. Oh, do I hear a second?
Second.